Okay.
Yeah, they just like us there.
Great.
Yeah, I'll send out, see you in a second.
All day long, I just need one minute.
And Jason wanted to hear yourself.
He's not?
Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Just gonna wait. If he's not here, we'll go ahead. Would you call the row, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair. Scott Singer.
Here.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Here.
Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I think we have a scout here that's gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of two million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars, eighty-seven cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive a presentation from Servmore and consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate agreement with Servmore for the use of the former police department building at two twenty-four South Chestnut.
Hi, council. Thanks so much for the chance to get to speak to you all. Sean Evans and Chris Fox, your director of volunteer operations. Just wanted a chance to give you guys a quick report on summer and what Servmore's been up to and then also here to ask for your help. So we've had a great summer. A lot of work's been done. Tons and tons of volunteers came from out of state again. And at this point, we're pretty confident that we can say that all of the out-of-state help that we've received, so much of, it's been such a tremendous help for the last fifteen months, is pretty well done. So we've done two summers with a lot of help from out of state and that's probably what we're gonna see a whole lot of that again. So what we're up to right now is we're really busy trying to strengthen our local networks, all our local partners and volunteer groups, churches. And this is a network that we just really hope is gonna serve more for a really long time. So that's what we're up to right now. Chris has got some numbers. He's given you some details. So let us know, Chris, what we've been up to.
Yeah, so this is just an update, where we are today since the tornado hit. Just some numbers there for you to see, some of the most significant ones. We've topped forty-five thousand volunteers that Servmore has coordinated through our efforts since the tornado. That's calculated over two thousand seven, two hundred and seventy-five thousand volunteer hours, so that's pretty sizable. We spent the summer, like Sean said, pretty busy. We've been focusing on renewal for the city, which is something that we think is pretty important going forward, not just recovery, which will hopefully and will come to an end of renewal, which we go on for a long time. And some things like that, we spent the summer building, repairing two hundred and fifty fences, seventy-five storage sheds, and four new playgrounds, one for the City of Moore, the Parks and Rec Department, and one, or three, for more public schools. So that's kind of our renewal. We wanna push forward in that. A project we still have going on for the fire department. Our volunteers are painting near thirty thousand fire items with fresh coat of paint. And we've launched an Old Town Community Garden and pumpkin patch that we'll continue to use every season. So those are some renewal things that we've done. We wanna take that and push it forward, continue to do more and more of that renewal in our community as time goes on. And so at this day, currently, we still receive about three to four requests for tornado recovery help each week from residents of the city. We also have thirty-five open cases with the Long Term Recovery Coalition and the Oklahoma Disaster Recovery Project. So we're still very much a partner of Long Term Recovery. We just wanna handle recovery and renewal together. And so because of that, like Sean mentioned, we'll begin building our local networks, encouraging local volunteerism through church, excuse me, churches and civic organizations. And then we also have a goal of doing once a month, a local volunteer day. We're calling it Servmore Saturdays, where we gather as many locals as possible and try to knock out a bunch of projects for the community, both related to the tornado and not increasing the soldier board. And then we hope to recruit twenty-five or more weekday volunteers as we continue to work on those recovery projects. So that's where we stand today.
Questions by any of us, though?
No, I actually invited you guys here, wanted to tell you publicly, thank you very much for all the work that you've done. And I know, Sean, you and I have talked about location. I know the church wants their building back.
Yeah.
We have an empty building.
That's true.
And I just thought it would be a good fit. And I wanted the council's input and what they thought about that, because you guys have done such an outstanding job in the community. And I know you've served a lot of people, not just tornado-wise, but you've improved the quality of the whole community so much. And Old Town especially, I mean, that's really looking good.
Thank you.
So we appreciate what you've done.
Certainly can't take credit for it.
Yeah, I think you could, actually.
It's been a lot of, a lot of hands involved. We do, we would love to talk to you guys about that space, where, you know, we've said again and again, this is not something that we wanna close the doors on. We don't wanna shut this down long after, you know, we can't see the effects of the tornado. We wanna see a lot of people that live here, that are serving here locally and giving back to their own community. So, you know, the gym, we've been in Covenant Life Assimilations Gym. Those guys have been incredibly gracious. They gave us the keys on day one and it never looked back once. But, you know, they were using that gym, they were using that space to serve the community before the tornado. And we don't wanna keep them from doing that for much longer. And they've got stuff that they're planning to do. So we just need to find a space. And, you know, we look up and we see, here's this health department that has been used for a long time here in this community, serving the community one way or the other. There was a health department, then there was a police department. And we'd really like to see and continue being a place that houses servants of the community. So we've got some ideas about that and we'd love to have a chance to talk to you about that.
Sean, do you have any idea what size building you need? Have you gotten that far?
We haven't really put square footage on it. We've got, you know, we've got a whole gymnasium right now, so stuff's, you know, fairly organized in there, but it's probably, you know, more space. We've got some stuff that we need to get rid of at this point. We'd like to keep some of our equipment. What we feel like is gonna happen is as the jobs get smaller and as we get into more, less tornado stuff and more renewal stuff, we're gonna need less and less space. So we obviously don't need the entire building that's over on Chestnut. What we would really love to talk about is an opportunity to take that space and turn it into maybe a resource center or an incubator for other nonprofits that are serving this community. And we'd like to help take the lead on maintenance and keeping the place nice and making it a great resource for, you know, people like, we've heard some stuff about the Boys and Girls Club, want to have a place where they can office here, places, offices for people like more beautiful. You know, there's lots of other nonprofits that we feel like could use the space. So our thought is, what if we took it, did some things, cleaned it up, you know, made it work for a few different nonprofits on the inside? And then we shared resources and shared ideas and worked together to serve the community.
The other question I had was, would it be appropriate to get something like the student bodies involved in the high schools? Like their, you know, the student council bodies, stuff like that?
For?
For just helping out the organization?
Yeah, absolutely.
So as a teacher, I was thinking that, you know, those kids, that's a good lesson to learn when you're a kid, you know? And I know those student council bodies are yelling about it. So if you, do you wanna throw some ideas around? I'll get with you and be happy to do that.
We've got some ideas. That's something that we've talked about. We're looking to start incorporating high school students in some of their groups. Yeah, we've got some ideas. We'd love to talk through that.
Yeah, just give me a shout.
I would just, I would love to see you guys, can you continue trying to network and tie all of these faith-based organizations, churches, our community together and have a central location? So when these things happen, everybody's gotta be on their own thing. I know this summer, our church, we sent some people down to Texas and some people in Texas were sending them here.
Yeah.
So we're passing each other on the interstate, doing projects in one another's communities when there's things that we can do here. And so you guys just be working to network and make that come together.
You and I did talk about that a while back. And one of the ideas, if I could just speak to that for a second, one of the ideas, because Servmore's always just been a collaboration of local churches that are kind of just locking arms and doing this thing together, serving the place where we live. That's part of what we're working on, to strengthen the local relationships with the churches. What we've been doing is communicating along with them over the last few weeks. And just one idea, we're working with some of our partner churches. Anybody that wants to be part of it, we're trying to have a seat at the table. And what we're doing is we're asking them to, whether it's their evening board or small groups or some school classes, someone to take the lead on actually what we may just call a response team. So First Baptist Church had a response team, and the Mayors had a response team, other churches had a response team. They got it if we ever needed it coming together. Probably do it pretty quickly. And even if, you know, there's an apartment fire, we need to keep together. Or there's an ice storm, we need to get together. So we're working there, strengthening all that. Anything else?
I'd like motion to approve that we authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Servmore for the use of this building.
Okay, great. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, thanks. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Thanks again, guys. Appreciate you. Item number four is consider the reappointment of Melissa Hunt, Daniel McKenzie, and Randy Tarleton to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, or consider appointing Chad A. Burks, Jack Joyner, and/or Brian Graham to the Planning Commission for a three-year term.
We have these appointments, mayor, reappointments or possible appointments to the Planning Commission and the next agenda items to the Board of Adjustment. We've got existing board members that have indicated their interest in continuing to serve on these boards. We also did a short notification or public notice period if there was other people that may be interested in these. And so that's the agenda items that you see there in front of you.
Okay, of the Melissa Hunt, Daniel McKenzie, and Randy Tarleton, do they want to be reappointed?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I guess, I mean, you're, they do a great job, of course, I'm sure.
They are, yeah.
And make that motion that we reappoint Melissa Hunt, Daniel McKenzie, and Randy Tarleton to the Planning Commission.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five, consider the reappointment of Janie Mylon to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term, or consider appointing Chad Burks, Jack Joyner, or Brian Graham to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term. Janie, do you still wanna be on it? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Janie Mylon for her reappointment to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. I appreciate the other three people applying for these positions, but we don't really have an opening until these people don't wanna do it.
Just a quick comment, if Mr. E. D. will take note of the people that trust and interest, if we have any other opportunities for them to serve in some capacity, that would be great. I know I've kind of been a vocal about how we appoint people to these boards and kind of hold that alone on my opinion. So until that time comes, you know, when somebody gets on the council or gets on the different boards and commissions, and they do a good job, have good opinions, they'll probably be there. So thank you for your interest and just pay attention. And when opportunities come to serve, don't be complicated or worry about us.
Mr. Manager, I wanna talk more about that at the end of the meeting, when it's council opportunities, but I'd like the council to talk about how we do this, the whole, might be a good idea?
Okay. Okay. Item six is discuss, considering if deemed appropriate, authorize a connection to the City of Moore Sanitary Sewer System from one thousand, or excuse me, thirteen thousand, two hundred South Sunny Lane, Oklahoma City, and authorize participation with the City of Oklahoma City in a limited scope sanitary sewer study to determine the feasibility of the City of Moore providing sewer service to a portion of Oklahoma City adjacent to our city limits along Bryant Avenue and Sunny Lane Road.
Mayor, that's a long agenda item, and I apologize for that. But we've been dealing with this with the City of Oklahoma City and this particular user and business for some time. And in the end, what we're asking for you to approve this evening is to approve the connection for this new business. And there's some information there in front of you, allied wireline, that is, I guess, under construction out there, or soon to be under construction as we speak out there on the Oklahoma City side of Sunny Lane. But we have sewer that's now available. If you recall, that we extended sewer up west of Sunny Lane there, north of Fourth Street, to serve those industrial businesses over there. And this particular user on the east side of Sunny Lane there can sewer over to this. And it's a business that's moving to our area and bring a number of employees. Even though it's in the city limits of Oklahoma City, it'll benefit us significantly, we think. So in the discussions with the City of Oklahoma City, they ask us about the feasibility of doing a study on some areas that are in the city limits of Oklahoma City adjacent to us. And the map that's in your agenda packet on page ninety shows some areas there essentially around Bryant and Sunny Lane on the northeast part of our community that can't be served by Oklahoma City Sewer, but may can be served by our sewer. So we're agreeing to do that with the City of Oklahoma City, but only with a lot of caveats, particularly with regard to treatment plant capacity issues that could be an issue at some point in the future. So we'd ask for you to approve this and we will visit with Oklahoma City and bring back a proposal as far as an agreement or a study in those areas of Oklahoma City.
But this allow them to go ahead?
This allows them to go ahead, build this business, know that they'll have the sewer, and be able to proceed.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Say it.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item seven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August night, or excuse me, August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of seven hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars, twenty-one cents.
Thank you for motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Would you call the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item A, hey, excuse me, this consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held August the eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars, forty-seven cents.
Move to approve.
Say it.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on these items?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Kerry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will now recess the Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number nine is new business. Item A is citizens' phone for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up to speak. Would anyone like to come up and speak? Okay. Item B is items from the city council trustees. Robert?
Yeah, I wanted to real quickly talk about something at the council. I guess, you joined the council in ninety-four, I think?
Ninety-four.
Yeah, so put me in ninety-six. I'm not as young as Sam said.
I'm the old guy.
When the man and I joined the council, we had, there were some issues around town and we had a chance to fix some things and do some good things. And I've learned a lot of lessons over that period of time. One thing I've learned is that the council won't always agree, but when we make decisions, we need to make them as a body. You know, we all need to be on the same page. We all need to know why a decision was made, why it didn't go the way you wanted, or however maybe you wanna look at it. But none of us, I don't feel personally, should be giving staff directions on behalf of the council outside of council meetings. I feel if we have questions, ask away. I think, you know, since we need to be careful what, you know, our job duties are, I probably don't necessarily do it right all the time myself, but, you know, I would just like to see this in the future. If you have something that you would like staff to do, the city manager or citizen city manager, whoever, bring it up at a council meeting, because sometimes I think the rest of the council may not agree with it. One thing being the way our boards were being nominated. I was getting several phone calls, as well as several other members of the council, that were shocked when the way we used to do things was being changed. And it turned out it was because a council member wanted it changed. I think that's a decision that the whole council should make. You know, we may not all agree on it, but it'd be nice if we could all have that discussion so we understand where each other's coming from. The staff has a lot to do. They're doing a fabulous job. And you put them in a tough situation whenever you give the city manager a direction and he's trying to do the right thing and do that for you, but then the rest of us are opposed to it, you put them in a real bad situation. And we don't need to do that. So I just simply would like to ask you to get y'all's input, you know, whenever we do things. I think direction should be done at council meetings. And regarding our boards, the way they're nominated, I think that, you know, if we need to tweak applications, let's talk about it and do so. I don't personally think that people need to come out and give speeches. I think we have all of their information on their applications. If a council member wants more information, they can call them, you know, 'cause you put them in a tough situation. It's tough to come up here and give a speech, you know, standing in front of the city and all of a sudden be told, hey, thanks for coming, but we chose someone else. That's embarrassing and you might keep them from ever wanting to do it again. That's, you know, that'd be tough. I don't invite them to go again. So that's all, yeah. And if anybody else had anything to share in the last vote?
I appreciate it. The, there were several people that called me and asked me how come my phone number wasn't out there on information? And I told them, it's like, you know, I'm the only mayor with a population of sixty thousand people. My number's in the book. So if you wanna get ahold of me, it's pretty easy to get ahold of. So, you know, I don't do a lot of email when I have time.
Robert, let me suggest one thing in that regard, and that is that policy issues, let's do that with policy issues, but just if you get a constituent call or there's an issue or there's a problem, let's don't do that at the city council level. Let's just call me and.
Right. Yeah, I may not have said that, but you're on the same page. Just one question.
Yeah, call them.
Or just call the mayor.
Just call them. Honestly, so what?
I would definitely agree with just the open communication that we guys can have with one another when we make decisions. I know on the boards and commissions, I've brought it up a couple of different times and I've never heard anything negative from the council during the meetings or after the meetings. Nobody just called me and came to me and said, hey, we don't like to do it that way. We're this long, we're doing it the way that we are. So this is the avenue that I choose to use to bring things up before this council. And if, I think I've always tried to come across, if it's not the direction the council chooses to go, I'm okay with that. I'm not gonna throw a fit, but I do think there's some things that are important that we wanna talk about. Being new, being on council for just a couple of years, I've always taken into account the work that has been done prior to me getting here and a lot of the decisions that were made, there's a reason for those. So maybe it would just take a phone call or an email from one of my fellow council persons to maybe explain to me or share with me or ask me why I feel that way. And again, we ultimately do not agree, but that's okay if we don't agree, you know? If it comes time to make a decision, we'll make one and then we'll go on. And if things change, things change. If they don't, they don't. And that's, that's the way our government is supposed to work. But too often, people, including myself, can be intimidated, whether they're standing at the council or sitting up here with you guys, to say anything. And you just wanna go along and get along. And I think it's important that we have discussions before the people, whether there's twenty people here or it's packed. And I just want us to have that, not to go back to the way the council used to be years ago, but great things have happened in our community and I'm so proud to be a part of it, as I've always tried to indicate in the past, and have a great respect for each one of you and everyone that sits up here. And your opinions and your ideas and your thoughts are important to me. But if I don't ever get to hear those, or if I hear them through other avenues instead of a telephone call, it's, it's not good. So consequently, I would agree that we need to have good effective communication amongst all of us. And good things will continue to go on for long after I'm gone and new people are sitting up here. And good things are coming for this community. So I'm proud to be a part of it, proud of the men and women that serve on our different boards and commissions, and those people that are interested in being a part of our municipal government. It's a great city and a lot of people wanna be a part of it. And I did too. And a few years ago, I ran for the opportunity to be on the council. And I loved every minute of it.
Well, I appreciate your words, but you understand that you're still getting directions outside of meetings. outside of meetings. If you don't hear from us, that doesn't entitle you to tell the staff that you want something done, that needs to be done up here. Okay, it's, we can't do it that way.
Right, and I, I believe that I've always tried to follow that, all my communication goes through Mr. Edie or Stan.
But, but then you need to talk with us, because the rest of the council may not agree with you. And if we don't agree with you, then they don't need to get those directions from us, because then you put him in a bad situation, because he's trying, he, he has seven bosses. You know, it's tough, and we all have seven different opinions. That's why, before we give them a direction, we need to talk about it together, and if four of us say, nope, it's not what we agree on, then you, you know, we each understand where we're all coming from, and city manager now understands that this is what we, as a body, have decided.
Well, and I think, I'm, I'm kind of trying to reflect and think about where I may have given direction directly to our city manager, we've come down to the boards and commissions maybe a month ago now, or maybe even a little bit longer, where I asked him to possibly come up with some coordinates pertaining to the selection process in these, through the, how we do boards and commissions. Other than that, I can't think of any, but if I have, please, please accept my apology, because it's not my intent to, to undermine anyone, but to bring things out here, and I've always will bring it out here, but generally, I'm going to talk to our mayor, or to our city council person, or to our city manager, or maybe to one other two council people. And if I get a lot of kickback from that, well then, I may not bring it up, but if I, something I feel passionate about, I'll bring it up, and then we can talk about it, and we can, you know, do a thumbs up or a thumbs down, and, and that's all right. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, guys.
I just have one thing. I've received a couple of complaints lately about the traffic on Broadway north of 12th Street, the, the design of the, of the street with the center medians, some of the trees, some of the people that live in English Village, some that, that use that exit, that have average or, or normal, regular-sized cars, are saying that, that some of the foliage from the trees is blocking their view, and some of them are having difficulties. So they may want to just ask staff to take a look at that and see if there's something they can do to remedy that.
Yeah, we, we, we are going to reevaluate that entire planting up there. I'm not happy with it, and it's, frankly, it's not very attractive, but if it has the additional problem of side distance, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Any votes? Okay. Item C is items from the city manager or trust manager.
Mayor, just a couple of things. I think I heard back from most of you all, but September 22nd, two weeks from, is that two weeks from last night, I guess, or three weeks, whatever September 22nd is, is a Monday night, is the night that I'd like to get everybody together in a study session to talk about Cleveland Heights. I think most everybody said that was good, but I wanted to make sure we confirm that.
That'd be, that'd be three weeks, you said 22nd?
The 22nd, yeah, three weeks from last night, yeah. So 6:30 PM, if that's okay, Mayor.
6:30.
We're going to have the attorneys that did this study on that for us some time ago, talk about that, and kind of talk about where we've come in the last year, probably, or thereabouts, with that development up there, so we'll do that. Just wanted to, there's a flyer in your mail here, wanted to remind you all, but also I'll say publicly that we're going to have an open house and reception. We want people to come and look at our new wastewater treatment plant, believe it or not. That's going to be September the 16th, which I believe is a Tuesday, at 2:00 PM at the plant.
Yes.
We're going to cut some ribbons, and have some speeches, and have some tours of a state-of-the-art facility down there that you'll be truly amazed at, in all seriousness.
We're having, we're hoping so.
We'll have, we'll have something to snack on, perhaps. You don't want to eat?
I wouldn't think you want to eat that.
No, you're fine, you're going to be fine. You're going to be fine. Also, the last two or three council meetings, we've had, we always have a police officer present, I think, as you know, many times we'll have an officer that most of you, if not all of you, would know, the last couple of meetings or so, we've had some of our younger police officers here, so I just am going to take the opportunity at future council meetings and this evening, just for the chief to introduce to you all this young officer, come on up. And so, you don't have to say anything.
Speak, speak.
I'm going to embarrass all the officers, just so they'll know, but truly, just, we have a fine group of officers, 80, what do we have now?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven police officers, and I, I get introduced to them once or twice, whenever they start here, and I don't normally see them for like 10 years after that, in terms of when they come off of the graveyard shift and that sort of thing, so...
Which I might add is a good thing.
It is a good thing. It's a great thing. But chief, if you'll introduce the officer.
Thank you. Mayor Council, just like to introduce to you Officer Gilson Bradley. He has been with the department about three, three and a half years. He comes from a total police department, a little time there, and Mid-America College Police Department, so he's got about seven years total experience. Like I said, he's been a real good job for us, got, just working the evening shift right now. How long have you been on the evenings now? Just told you.
About two months.
About two months. Anyway, so we, we do have a lot of new officers, and yet, at times, you know, they get on-night shifts, and we don't even, I have our time to see them at times, so, but like I said, we've got a lot of good ones, and they're doing a good job for us, and we just wanted you to kind of see them, in case you run into them, and maybe they don't like, so, you know, they're all good guys, and girls, too, so.
We appreciate the work you guys do. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, item 10 is adjournment.